Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Brooke Marcot.
I'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pray this is the right of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got a wounded one right here, so. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed. Councilmember Dustin Swear.
Here.
Thank you. First item number one, public comment. We have no comment cards, so we will move on to item 2A.
Bo Dewey, 16th Judicial District Attorney, to address the council to request a pledge of $417,271 in funding from the City of New Iberia and City Council for the construction and equipping of the Acadiana Crime Lab.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is hot. For the record, Bo Dewey, District Attorney for the 16th Judicial District, which covers Iberia, St. Martin, and St. Mary Parish. I'm here today along, this is Kevin Ardwan, who is the Executive Director of the Acadiana Crime Lab. We're here to ask about a cash, I mean, not cash, a match related to a capital outlay project that's currently pending in Baton Rouge at this time. But before we begin, the situation is really about the condition of the lab, why we're at this point where we're looking to build a new lab. We have a short video, about three minutes, that kind of shows it instead of a 30-minute boring PowerPoint, so.
The Acadiana Crime Lab, or ACL, was established in 1971 and began up.
I'm already started, I'm sorry.
The ACL started in the basement of the Acadiana Regional Airport Tower and moved into its current facility in 1989. The facility was initially an oilfield business in the 1980s before ACL retrofitted the building into a crime lab. ACL services law enforcement agencies in eight Acadiana parishes: St. Mary, Iberia, St. Martin, Vermillion, Acadiana, Lafayette, Evangeline, and St. Andrew. Unfortunately, due to the age of ACL, operational conditions within the lab and the limited size of the lab has become challenging. For instance, the current crime lab is 10,000 square feet. The optimal size of a crime lab is 1,000 square feet per employee to accommodate personnel and the numerous pieces of equipment necessary for the employees to perform their responsibilities. ACL has 23 employees that must work in these conditions. The integrity of the building is failing. Heavy rainfalls have flooded the lab, causing risk to hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment and evidence retained in the lab for custodial purposes. The ACL staff has implemented flood protocols, such as raising equipment off the floor, blocking windows that leak, covering equipment and putting garbage cans out to protect from roof leakage. A grave concern is a direct hit from a hurricane like Ida or Laura. The roof has been repaired on many occasions and still has consistent leaks. Hurricane-force winds may destroy the building and potentially the evidence, including DNA evidence, that is necessary to seek justice for victims of violent and sex offenses. ACL has been successful in obtaining capital outlay from the state of Louisiana for architectural drawings to build a new crime lab to address all of these issues, including structural soundness from hurricanes. In this legislative session, 2022, ACL has been fortunate to have an opportunity for capital outlay to build a new crime lab. The lab will be built on profit currently owned by ACL near the Acadiana Regional Airport in Iberia Parish, which is a central location within the eight parishes it serves. Through the efforts and support of our legislative delegation, public officials in the communities of the eight parishes the ACL serves, we are optimistic that we will meet the requirements for the state match required for the capital outlay approval.
Let me use you a good visual idea of the problems out there. Well, first, before we get to that, you know, obviously, I don't believe it, I really have to, you know, sell y'all on the need of a crime lab. I mean, in this day and age, this crime lab that Kevin has and serves as eight parishes is critical to what we do. And what's important about the crime lab is, the crime lab is a tool, not just for the state, it's also a tool for the defense. It's a truth-seeking tool. It takes items of evidence and it tells you what it is, what it shows or what it doesn't show. And it has been responsible, obviously, for presenting evidence to us that have resulted in convictions and it's also provided us with evidence that shows that we have the wrong person. And that person, thankfully, is not prosecuted of those crimes. So it's a fact-finding organization. The need is significant today with everybody, you know, everybody. We have a term in my world that's used really nationally, it's called the CSI effect. Because everybody watches CSI, right? And everybody expects DNA to come out in a commercial break. And that's just not reality. That's not the reality of what they do. I mean, they have a very integral part of what goes on. So as you see the building, we had, Kevin, if you wouldn't mind coming up to kind of help me walk through. We were in Capital One the first go-round when we've gotten, what was the amount last year?
So we got 2 million in P5 and 2 million in P1. That was the most recent request, and of course, we have more going on in this session.
And we use that for the architectural drawings that you're showing of a 40,000-square-foot building. The anticipation would be to increase the staff till about 30?
So according to the renderings, we're in the planning and design phase of a new laboratory. We did receive capital outlay funds to do that portion, so right now, we're well into that. We hope to complete the planning and design phase by the end of the year. We're looking at about 40,000 square feet. We're projecting 35 employees, project for some growth, 35 employees, which includes adding a toxicology department. So we're trying to stay within around that 1,000 square feet per employee number. So we feel that we have a good size that's not overbuilding, not underbuilding, but to also project for some growth. And like I said, we hope to finish that at the end of the year.
And what they do is just really important, and of course, we invite anybody who wants to tour the lab at any point to let us know. And it's really important if you want to come see it and what they do, the conditions they work in. But these committed individuals do everything from DNA to ballistics to, help me out, Kevin.
So we do drug, the three main sections, drug analysis, so any confiscated drug evidence comes to us for testing. Anything with shooting crimes, we can take the ammunition components found on the scene, cartridge cases, bullets, and actually match them back to a gun. We can also connect gun crimes through our, what we call our NIBIN database. And then, of course, DNA, anything of, at a crime scene, anything of biological value left behind, whether it be blood, semen, homosexual assault, contact DNA. We can take that evidence and actually develop a profile that may be unique to the individual. So which could be a very important tool and big assistance to the law enforcement that's actually investigating the case.
And what's important is it's compared to, in particular, two different databases. The NIBIN system is a catalog national database based on, when you go to a scene and you pick up empty cartridges, casings, the casings in there, and you look at them, they have unique characteristics about where it's, what type of weapon is used, when it strikes, striations, where the bullet ejects and whatever, and goes into that, and we're able to compare them. And Kevin has produced charts where you can see this crime was used in these multiple crimes with NIBINS. And then you could connect them, you could sort of try to find where a pattern is, where an individual may have been in all of these different crimes, and it's a very useful tool. As well as in the DNA section, people have been swabbed with DNA when they're arrested on felony charges, and that database is called CODIS. And they can put a sample of unknown person into a database, and then it can return, and if it's got a match, if somebody's been in the system, it'll say, we got a match, and then you do a confirmatory reference. And it's an extremely useful tool that we have used over the years that have resulted in solving many cases. We solved many rape cases. Thankfully, the former director had kept rape kits that were secured at the lab from back in the 90s, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we actually had, Travis Owen was the first lab director back in 1972, and the lab was formed. And when he was lab director, he had the foresight to preserve a lot of unsolved sexual assault cases. He saw this DNA technology coming down the road, so we had DNA preserved from 1986 to 2003. So when DNA finally came online, and with the success of the Derek Todd Lee serial killer case that we were able to assist in and develop, profile and help solve that case, we received funds to go back on these unsolved sexual assaults, going back to 1986, and there were over 300 of them. About 200, almost 300, 285 actually had CODIS-able profiles, meaning profiles you can go in CODIS and see if it matches to an individual. To date, we've solved 60% of those unsolved cases going back to 1986. So this shows the value and the usefulness in CODIS. Because the way CODIS works is, the law was created in 2003, where if you're arrested for a number of misdemeanor, a number of felony crimes, your DNA profile can go in this database. Not to mention just unsolved, or crimes in general, or unsolved crimes where you may have this unknown profile, that's all gone also into CODIS. So what happens is, over time, if a suspect committed a crime or did something, and he's in that database, if you have a crime where you have an unknown profile put in the database, you can conceivably help solve or give a lot of credit for that, finding out who that profile is that's from the crime scene. I'll just give you one more quick example, I don't want to go too long. We actually had a case where we had a profile 10 years, and that person was just, had that profile, was just never in CODIS. Didn't get arrested, didn't just went in it. He went in 10 years later, and the case was solved. So that shows the value of this CODIS data.
So that's our sell on the importance of the lab, and I think y'all understand that. So what we're looking for tonight is, we're currently in capital outlay right now. We have 3.8 million in P1?
So 3.8 in P1 and 10.8 in P5.
P5, right now, that's going through the process. And the estimate right now that we have roughly of the bill hopefully will be 20 million or less. We haven't gotten to the point where we've done, actually gone out to bid because the plans are still being finished. I don't know a lot about capital outlay, I don't want to know a lot about capital outlay, so I'll leave that to Kevin. But we're estimating that figure. So it's a prime time to have it, because on the House side, you have Representative Stuart Bishop, who kind of controls that committee, and Stuart, who is actually from Generec originally, in Lafayette now. Representative Bo Ye, who is also working on this bill and is the lead on this bill, is the vice chair. And on the Senate side, you have Senator Allen, Brett Allen from St. Mary. So we have kind of both sides of the Senate and the House kind of covered. And they have both indicated to me that, you know, that they're comfortable with the project. Of course, you know, it's still subject to be voted on, but it's moving through the legislature right now. But every time I go to Baton Rouge, including today, they say, where's your match? They want to know that commitment, and Mayor, you probably understand that.
Very, too much.
And so we're trying to do that, and so today, what we're looking for is we're looking for a resolution in support of a project, and we decided, tried to decide on how to separate that $5 million amongst the eight parishes. When initially, you think, okay, let's just separate it between the parishes and base it on that. But when you start looking at the numbers, you see where there's multiple, and I hadn't even counted how many agencies we got, local agencies.
Probably approximately between 50 and 60 in our total eight parishes.
50 and 60 law enforcement agencies in the eight parishes. And we went back and we looked at 2019 cases submitted into the lab, which was the last pre-COVID representation of the draw on the lab. Who's using the lab? Where are their resources going to? And then we broke each parish's total case number, which in, I mean, I'm sorry, in New Iberia, Iberia was 798 cases. They had 6,207 cases submitted, 798 came from Iberia Parish. And if you break it down, and we've got it broken down between all the law enforcement agencies, the NIPD had 518 of the 798 cases. You had 35 from Generec Police Department, 20 from the Generec Marshal's Office, 217 from the Sheriff's Department, and seven from Delcum. And we've already been around and got committed resolutions separating those amounts from Delcum. We've soon to get one in from Iberia Parish and from the City of Generec. And we hear today that the 518 percentage of the 642, 823 is the $417,271 that is attributable to the caseload coming out of the city. And so we're looking for that resolution that says that this council would, could use their best efforts to support the project and their best efforts to commit up to that dollar amount, should capital outlay be granted and should a match be required. As part of all this, this is my way of showing the legislature, we have support and we have commitment. But it's not stopping us from going around and trying to find other sources of revenue to take that $5 million figure down. For instance, we're in discussions with Department of Administration, arguing that this is a regional project and arguing that this is an emergency project. And I analogize it to Hurricane Katrina, when Orleans Parish jail, where their evidence rooms were in the basement, fled. And they lost a significant amount of evidence that compromised multiple crimes of violence and sex crimes from being prosecuted. I am also, I've also talked to our local legislative delegation, the representatives in particular, and I asked them that should they be allotted any surplus money individually as part of the appropriation process that goes on? Would they be willing to consider taking some of that money and applying it to this project? And all of them said yes. And I used a figure of $50,000, which just sounded good. And if you have 24 representatives and senators in Acadiana, that's a million two off the five. So if we can get, think out the box and kind of start loaning in that, all of the different agencies that we're coming to, hopefully, you will not have to go to that limit that we're asking for tonight. The money does not need to be, it's probably not till the end of the year or into next year before there's any need. It's probably going to be at least over two, multiple years to do that, to break it down. But that's our ask, and we humbly and respectfully ask for your support.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
I have one. Is this best efforts, or is this a commitment, or what are we doing here? Are we appropriating the money?
My plan, if, once we, you know, once we talk about it and decide that that's what we want to do, is to pass the resolution, which means we are committing up to that much money. I have already looked, because of course, that's my job, I got to figure out where the money's coming from. Part of it's coming out of the police budget, and part of it will come out of our general fund. And there's a split, which is important to me. My new budget kicks in in November, so I will rob a little from PETA this year, rob a little from PETA next year, and figure out, and go to the PD twice, and figure out how I can pull this off. I do realize that we are users of the crime lab. We're a very new department. It's not easy to come up with this money, because that's money I could use for the PD, because I'm still building a PD. But what good does building a PD do if I don't have a crime lab to put people away? If I don't have a crime lab that, you know, seals the deal and puts those people where they belong? We, as a community, taxed ourselves to start a police department. We, as a community, I'm in it up to my neck, and I love every minute of it, but we are constantly, you know, we have our, it's a great town, but we have law enforcement, you know, we have crimes, we have issues just like every other community. So I feel that what we're doing is committing to pull this off by hook or by crook over this budget year and next budget year, because we need it. It's a tool that, you know, I got to make sure those people stay where they belong, and where they belong is in jail. And it takes the crime lab to prove those cases. So that's pretty blunt.
I disagree with you. I just hear best efforts here.
I understand. Well, and for me, as the budget guy, I have to say, it's not a best. Look, if he comes and says less, I'll run back to this council, and if we save 100 grand, y'all know me, I'll think of a new project we can do with it. So, but I do have to, you know, take it that we are committing. But I appreciate you asking that. Yes, sir.
So Bo, just a couple of questions. Are you guys prepared? Obviously, we sitting here and we seeing a lot of projects coming back way over our initial budget number. Are you guys prepared to squeeze 20 million? Within that 20 million, prices come back much higher? Are you all prepared to have to come back and ask for more?
I don't, I'm not prepared to come back and ask for more.
I mean, but 20 million may be a...
I got that, but this is a tough ask for the communities. It's a very tough ask. And I'm, look, through hook or crook, I've said, Kevin, when we started this project, we're going to make this work. But I don't, they're going to have to drag somebody else up here to ask for more money. I just, you know, and I got your point.
No, no, because I'm seeing it, you know, I see it.
So we have a lot of projects going, and they're all coming in over budget.
I would hope if it gets to that point, we would have exhibited enough commitment to the project that we could hopefully maybe have the legislature finish it out.
Deduct alternates, that's what you need. Tell your architects you need deduct alternates. You got to be able to back it down. You can have three deduct alternates. I suggest you have three deduct alternates. And then you're in the, because once your price is, I'm a contractor, once your price is out there, it's out there. So you need a mechanism to knock it down right at the beginning when those bids are open and not have to rebid, because everybody's going to know your number.
Do I hear that to be a commitment from you to join this task force and help with this capital outlay project?
Well, I help you with that part. I know that part. That's the only part. But I would like to know how they were welding to stop that roof leak. That, that's me. You can do that, bro. That's for the king.
There was sure enough of a beam in the...
I'm sure they were. I'll just take, they talk about the roof leaks, and they sure got welded. Only I would get a kick out of that. I give you extra points with that.
We would welcome, I would welcome, you know, because, you know, you come with a unique skill set.
Well, if I can help, you know, I will.
But anyway, that was my only question, and like Freddie said, I mean, this is essential to every community for the protection of property and citizens. I mean, obviously, you guys need this, and we need to support it in some way or fashion, and I commend you on your efforts. But just one more question, though. I don't remember, how is the crime lab owning and operating maintenance? How do you retrieve them?
Traffic tickets.
Traffic, okay, that's what I thought you told me.
Yes, they operate 97% of their budget is traffic tickets. Out of each traffic ticket that is generated in any municipality or district court, city court, in all of these parishes, there's a small fee that is generated and paid to the crime lab, and we've been very, very tough. As a commission, the commission is made up of the four DAs, the eight sheriffs, the eight parish presidents, and appointee of each parish council of one of their members. And we're very, very vigilant about making sure all of these agencies understand, you got to do this, you got to do this. So that enables him the cash flow. What he didn't, what we didn't mention is, the money for the first match was taken out of the general fund, but we can't do that again, or else we're not going to cash flow. And so there is skin in the game here, and yes, it does concern us. It does concern us. There's frankly a bill right now, North Louisiana Crime Lab, as an example, which serves 27, 28 parishes.
Yeah, 28, the top half of the state.
They built a lab that's 80,000 square feet, and it's a big lab that has a lot of needs from a monthly cash flow, and they're in a hemorrhaging right now because of the lack of cash flow. So there's actually a legislative bill going through right now that allows entities, the DA's office or anybody who has a diversion program, to use some of that money to help a crime lab if they need it. At this point, we're not here asking for that, because Kevin has done a good job of making sure he's, you know, doing what he can with grants and whatever he needs. But it's tough. When you hit a pandemic or hurricane, it drops.
I mean, that's what the industry, I mean, it's nice to have a new facility and a first category, but you don't have the money to operate it. It serves no purpose. So if you got both, it's not like you guys got both of them, and I commend you.
And quite frankly, it's ridiculous that we have to go through that, whether it's his office, my office, or whatever. We should have a dedicated source of funding, but we don't. This is the business plan we were given, so we operate.
We've had that discussion before. Any dedicated resources or other things, too?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We're doing one for Rose. Vote yes, anyway.
Next, anybody else?
That's a prime example.
Who owns the current building that you guys are in right now?
So the laboratory owns the building, and we also own the property that we want to build a new one.
Okay. Do y'all plan to sell the building and maybe use those funds to go towards a new one as well?
That's definitely an option, I guess.
I've actually tried to offer it as part of the match, but nobody wanted it. I was like, yeah, I mean, once we remove, why don't you take the building? And they're like, ah, we don't want it.
Okay, got you. That's it.
But we'll try our best to use those funds to offset expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I was going to kind of, kind of like what Jeff asked, is this a one-time fee?
Well, it's a one-time ask for this building, yes. It's a one-time fee. Not a fee, but it's a one-time.
One-time, the commitment.
The resolution up to vote on?
It's not a reoccurring, we won't be back asking for the same.
3F, it's down the road.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
If there's no objection.
Okay. If there's no objection, we have this, and I know you have more places to go tonight. I understand. 3F is our resolution to support this. So if you want to, I would ask if you'd be willing to have a motion to move this on the agenda, to move it up, basically.
Motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second.
Yeah. So I have a motion on the floor by the Mayor Protim, and you were the second?
Yeah, I was the second, you motioned.
Okay, and a motion by Councilman Swear to adjust the agenda and move this item up. Is there any discussion on this? Please vote your machines to move the agenda item. Great, thank you. Then now, Madam Clerk, if you can read 3F, we can roll.
Resolution 22-105, a resolution in support of the Acadiana Criminalistics Laboratory District Capital Outlay Request of Funds to construct and equip a new Acadiana Criminalistics Laboratory and committing the City of New Iberia to provide matching funds in an amount not to exceed $417,271 should said capital outlay request be funded by the state of Louisiana and local matching funds be required.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I would ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Listen, if I can just take one second to tell you, I really appreciate your support of this. I mean, I've, you know, I've been in public safety and government work my whole life. I appreciate the fact that this mayor and this council is supportive of what we're trying to do to make sure that our community and constituents are safe, and this is a big commitment for y'all, and it reflects y'all's commitment to this community, to make a safe community, and y'all are doing y'all part. I will do my point as district attorney to make sure that happens. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And Mayor, real quick, and I do understand the commitment, it is a tough ask. But again, like you said, you know, and not just for solving crimes, but also for setting innocent people free as well.
True.
I mean, this is a, this is a big deal.
It is.
And it's hard not to, and we don't have any opposition either, so.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. We apologize for leaving early, but we have a...
No problem. Thank you all.
Madam Clerk, 3B. No, 2B, I'm sorry, 2B.
Erica Kapak, to address the council and discuss Iberia Parish rabies and animal control operations.
Good evening.
Hi, this is my first time being here. My name is Erica Sapak, and I have been the shelter manager since November. I just wanted to kind of give you a progress report of what's been going on. Um, I just wanted to kinda give you a progress report of what's been going on, um, at the shelter, future projects and some of the awards that we have gotten, um, in the last few months.
And I'm only gonna interrupt you for one second. We had a meeting and I was very impressed at a lot of the positive and proactive things that she was implementing. And so we started talking and I said, you know, why don't you come? This would be a good time, you know, we, we all have issues with animals, we know that, but I see that you're making some positive steps. So that's kinda what started this. And I said, you know, why don't you come? And she said, well, I, I wanted to do it anyway. So anyway, I, I just wanted to let everybody know that we had talked, we were working together and that we had a really positive meeting not too long ago, kind of addressing some of our issues.
Yeah, we're all trying to be on the same page. And it's really, um, helping us, especially with, uh, dogs and cats at large and as well as neglect cases throughout the parish and city. So it's definitely takes a village and with everybody being on the same page and working together, it's really making a difference. All right, so, um, I've been here right about six months. Um, we have been, um, working really close with the parish president, uh, Larry Richard and Iberia Parish Council, um, also with the support from our citizens, volunteers, our participating, uh, rescues and Project Rise. We're being able to make, um, a lot of progress with our building, with policies, um, and working as a team through all the different municipalities. Recently, we, um, did amend the rabies ordinance. Um, what, uh, the first amendment that had changed allowed us to, when we get animals into our facility, it allows us to adopt out to the public, um, to release animals to rescues or to humanely euthanize. Um, the major part of that was, uh, to add release to rescue into our ordinance because it wasn't in there prior. Most of the animals that come into our facility do go to rescue. Almost, I would say almost, um, 80% of our animals go straight to rescue. Um, on this slide, um, it's just a few of the rescues that work with us. Um, we have some here in Louisiana, Colorado, many of them that work with us in Maine, Florida, um, and also the Bissell Pet Foundation. Um, we reach out to all of these rescues to help pull animals from us because otherwise you would stay full and not be able to take any animals in because our phones are constantly ringing off the hook, um, between city and parish, um, citizens. There's always an issue somewhere. Um, it could be an aggressive animal that needs to be removed immediately. It could be a bite case. It could just be, uh, stray animals, um, you name it, we see it. On our next, um, slide, we do, uh, after-hours adoption events because we're only open from 7:00 to 3:30 Monday through Friday. For most working class people, they don't get off until 5:00, 5:30. Um, so either we make appointments for people to come in after hours or we do these adoption events once a month. I just put a few of them on here, but every single month we have after-hours events, um, so that people can come in, walk through our facility, meet our adoptable animals face to face. And it really helps, um, connect with the community. Um, our next event is gonna be on June 4th. Um, that's the Pooh Boys and Puppies Adoption Event. Um, we, uh, got with the Frosted Apron and they are helping us put on this event, uh, for free to bring families out and to also educate them about our facility, spay and neuter and, um, also heartworm disease. Um, this is just a quick summary. Um, we are part of the Bissell Pet Foundation and we were awarded the Healing Heartworm Grant, um, which Kathy Bissell provided our dogs with Heart Guard and Doxycycline to start their, um, heartworm treatments. Um, when dogs are heartworm negative, it makes it easier for them to be adopted by local families and also by rescues. Um, cause a lot of people, when you tell them, oh my gosh, my, uh, this dog has heartworms, they're like, oh wait, that's a lot of money, you know, to treat. I don't know if I wanna get into that. Um, so with her program helping us get these dogs started on the right track, um, it allows for more people to wanna adopt our dogs. And same thing with rescues, they're not gonna have to spend so much money on treating these dogs. She also gave us, um, rabies vaccines, feline, uh, vaccines, Distemper Parvo, Bordetella, um, a gallon of Panicure, syringes to give these, um, vaccines, feline AIDS and leukemia tests for cats, um, Revolution, um, which is heartworm medication as well as flea medication for cats and heartworm tests for dogs. All of that together with several thousands of dollars that we were awarded. Um, we also participate in Bissell transports through the Trello computer program. Um, so what we have to do, every animal that comes into our facility, we have to put them on to this program. And then all the Bissell, um, foundation, uh, rescues that participate can literally pick and choose each one of our animals off of that page. And they go all over the country. Um, the last one that we participated in, uh, we had 45 cats and a few dogs go to Michigan. Um, but every, um, every transport's different on how much they're gonna pull. Um, this past event, um, we just finished with was from May 1st to May 15th. It was the Empty the Shelters event, um, that lowered our adoption prices to $25. And then Bissell Foundation, um, is matching with a grant for every, um, dog that was adopted. They give us a hundred dollars for their services because we provide, um, every dog to be, uh, fixed, a microchip, rabies, Distemper Parvo booster, Bordetella and D-worm. All of those services are included. So, um, we're pretty much getting paid back for lowering the cost. Um, so we're not out of pocket for any of those, um, any of those adoptions. And, um, for cats, it, we got four cats adopted during that time and we get $50 back on all of those charges. And those, um, charges are for spay and neuter, microchip, um, a feline booster vaccine and D-worm. Um, we were able to get nine dogs out and four cats. That is the most we've gotten out in a two-week timeframe, um, from our facility. Um, normally we get one here, one there, but most of the time they're going to rescue. But this was awesome for that many local families to adopt. In, um, February, um, of this year, we were, um, the shelter spotlight for Kathy Bissell's, um, Bissell newsletter that went out through the whole country. Um, she just was giving us great praise and to keep, continue to keep doing the, the best work that we can and to keep moving forward. Um, and this is all of our employees that we have. Um, we have two ACOs right now, animal control officers, um, me and, um, a secretary and we have two part-timers right now. Um, we're trying to get a third ACO. Um, we have not had any applications. So I also put that on my slide, just in case you know anybody. All right, next slide. So from November when I started until now, 738 animals have come into our shelter.
Wow.
738. This is a breakdown from, um, dogs to puppies, cats to kittens and the few that don't have birth dates, um, are also added in there. That is from city, parish, everybody. I have a break, a breakdown, um, later to break it down by city and parish and all that kinda stuff. If you wanna go to the next one for me? Okay, so this one's kinda small, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it any bigger. Um, this is the outtake form. So this tells us where every single one of those 700, well, on here, it's 769 animals have been out of the shelter as of today. So our out rate is actually higher than Lafayette Parish's non-kill animal shelter. They're at 90 something percent. I'm over 100. But it's because of our parish president, our parish council, our city council, our mayor, all of us working together as a community, as well as our volunteers and rescues to pull these animals out. It is not a one-person show. It is all of us working as a unit. Um, on this paper, it does show that 536 animals were, that whole number was sent to rescue between November and May today. 536 all over the country. Um, through our adoptions, that's all the way at the top, that's 99 local adoptions that we've had. Um, the next line is, uh, the, um, spay, neuter and release, sorry. It, I was still on the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, we only have 36 on there. Um, we don't normally spay, neuter and release. If we get a feral cat in, we do fix them and then they are able to, um, be barn cats for people or for warehouses to keep the rodent, uh, population down. But there's no cost, um, there for anybody that needs those kitties. Um, so we don't have that many there. Um, let's see. Okay, that's about it on that one. Okay, now I can go to the next one, sorry. Okay, so this is a breakdown. This is the intakes, this, uh, 741 intakes. And it gives you a breakdown from each city and parish. Um, and I kinda put the numbers up there. So Iberia, um, city is the two lines, New Iberia and New Iberia City. Um, those two, the first line is New Iberia. That's when animal control picks up the animals within the city limits. The second line, New Iberia City, is when the public brings in any animals from the city limits. So when you put those two numbers together, it's 390, just here in the city. And there's still so much more. Um, we have traps all over the city, um, and in Genereit right now, to be honest, um, with wild dog packs. They're still here too. They're still here in the city. There's two separate ones we're working on right now. Um, so we, and Genereit has a few as well. Um, but I just wanted to show a breakdown. It's about 50, 52.77% for Iberia, uh, city limit, Iberia Parish, which, um, included, um, Coto, Genereit and Lydia. Um, that was about 39% of our, um, intakes. And then it just kinda fades off from there, uh, from Delcum, Genereit and, uh, Lauraville City. Alrighty. So Project Rise, has anyone heard of Project Rise here? Um, it is a nonprofit that raises money for our vet bills and they normally do like one big construction project, um, a year. They do fundraisers, t-shirt sales, they volunteer at our adoption events. Um, this year's construction project is indoor/outdoor kennels, um, which I put examples up on the screen. They will have doors that go open, uh, that we can open and close from the inside. Um, that will allow, uh, less interaction with bike quarantine dogs. Uh, cause right now, we have to still use the catch pole to be able to bring them out and we are still being put at harms way more than we should. So, um, this is the best way to keep us safe as well as the dog in those circumstances. And then also it gives the dogs twice the amount of space for them to have exercise. So they can choose to be inside or they can choose to be outside and go in and out freely. Um, we do have a metal awning that will give them shade. They won't be in direct sunlight. Um, that's already in place, but we will be adding about six, uh, it's six by 10 feet. Kennels are gonna be added on the outside. Right now they're, um, let's see, I think they are about, um, I think they're about four by six on the inside, um, or four by eight. But we're going to be adding a good amount of space. And that'll help them as well, especially the ones that are having to be there longer to be able to find them rescues or to be able to get them adopted. So that's the main reason that we, we really wanted to do this project. Um, all of the local shelters around us have these cages. Um, we're the only ones that haven't gotten there just yet, but we will be there. Um, we, uh, Project Rise is, um, looking for bids and trying to find the materials for this project. Um, but they, they're having issues with, um, financing because as y'all know, everything is much higher than, um, they were last year. So we, we're working, um, with them to go ahead. Even if we get one side done, it'll make a tremendous, um, difference for the lives of our animals at the shelter and for, um, our kennel workers when they're having to deal with rabies quarantine dogs. So we have, um, a few, um, upcoming projects. We are going to be repairing the gates, um, on our Sally Port, which are the gates on the front, uh, the top picture. Um, we are going to be repairing those. As you can see, the, the gates do not touch the ground, so the dogs can get underneath and they can try and escape, um, which we don't want them to be doing that, you know? So, um, we just wanted to, uh, get the, get little repairs like that done on those two fencing, um, issues. Uh, we are also going to be, um, building play yards for the dogs to exercise. And I will be working, um, with Canes and the Boy Scout troops here to try and make little agility courses, um, for them. Um, we are, we are gonna be sealing the floors throughout the kennel areas, which is a huge project. Um, the reason that we need that done is anytime an animal has, let's say, intestinal worms in one kennel, it can litter, by them cleaning the kennels, it can seep into the next cage from, um, us cleaning. And it can eve, those intestinal parasites, the eggs can even get into the pores of the cement. So any dog that comes in there next can also end up getting intestinal parasites. So that's why that, that, um, project is so big, but it's so important, um, so that we're not spreading sickness. Um, our last project that we're working on right now is we are in the process of, um, finding a quarantine building. The reason that we need this is that every animal that comes in should be in isolation for a good 10 days. Reason being, Parvo virus, um, hits a shelter pretty fast. Um, it's about 10 to 14 days, um, that it takes to show this virus. But it moves extremely quickly, especially on dogs that aren't vaccinated, which most of the ones that we get in, they're not vaccinated until they come to us. Um, and we're getting in a lot of puppies. It's puppies and kitten season. So the best thing is to isolate them in this quarantine building for those amount of days so we can observe them. If they are showing any signs of sickness, they can stay quarantined in there instead of exposing our entire facility. Um, so that, that's why that is so important. Same thing, um, in other months, sometimes kennel cough, which is just pretty much like a cold to us, um, can be spread, it's airborne as well, can be spread through a kennel. Um, if we had this building, those new animals would be in there for the 10 days. If they would show any... would be in there for the ten days. If they would show any signs, we can isolate it in there instead of it spreading through the, um, kennel and having to treat all of those animals. It gets very expensive fast. So that's, um, that's our last project, um, that we're working on, um, this year. So I want to thank y'all for inviting me to come and just listening to what we're working on right now, what we're working towards. Um, do y'all have any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank you for all that you've done. Uh, of course, I went and visited, and we had a nice little chat, and you're doing a great job over there. We do appreciate it. Um, and that's it for now. I'm sure we'll be in touch, though.
Oh, yeah, definitely. My phone's on twenty-four-seven. As you can tell, I haven't even been home yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you for coming, and I wanted the council and the public to just see the good work you're doing, and, uh, we know we have our issues, but we have a lot of good, you know, positive movement as well, so it's always good to...
It's one step at a time.
Yeah, you can't focus on the negative, and you just gotta, you know, one step at a time, but we see progress, so I, I'm glad you came.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, two C.
Lori McGrew to address the council to raise awareness about Matty's Footprints.
So I'm not Lori McGrew. Lori McGrew couldn't come, but my name is Hannah Gilery. I'm the st- on the staff for Matty's Footprints. I'm the events and marketing coordinator. Um, we really just wanted to come in here and say thank you. Um, what we do is extremely important to us, of course, um, on behalf of Lori, Matty's mom, um, but also, more importantly, is the support we get back from the community and from Acadiana and every parish within Acadiana. It has been astounding how supportive, um, each and every one is, all of the civilians. Um, I guess, just to give y'all a little bit of back for, of Matty's Footprints, if anyone is unfamiliar with the organization. So we're a nonprofit. Um, we started by just serving Lafayette and quickly expanded to all of Acadiana, um, within our first year. We were started, um, on behalf of and memory of Madeline McGrew, um, who was born still in two thousand nine. Um, so we were founded in two thousand ten, and since then, we have been providing financial and emotional assistance, um, to any family who is coping with miscarriage, stillbirth, and infant loss. Um, so what that entails is covering medical bills, funeral costs, any end-of-life expenses that they may encounter, as well as, um, providing emotional support for them as well. Uh, so what we've been doing for a long time is important to us, and really, we just appreciate the support we've gotten back.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? No questions or comments? Here, you can bring back. I have a, a proclamation for you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming, and thanks for, thanks for the work you do.
Of course.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Madam Clerk, we move on to resolutions. Uh, Resolution three A.
Resolution twenty-two dash one hundred, awarding contract to TJ Bro Electrical LLC for the T-Buy Waste Water Treatment Plant electrical updates to the Aeration Basin project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelan. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none? Then, uh, I'd please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. Three B.
Resolution twenty-two dash one oh one, awarding contract to NCMC LLC for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Electric Valve Actuator Upgrades and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
Good to see some contracts from the American Rescue Plan being awarded.
You know, that's what I was thinking when I, when we were putting the agenda together, you know, it's, it's, it's starting. This is a good thing. This is a good thing. Any other questions or comments? Hearing seeing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Now we move on to three C.
Resolution twenty-two dash one oh two, rejecting bids for sewer system improvements, Basin D, LCDBG fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelan. Is there any discussion on this item? This item will come up for rebid again.
What's the, uh, question? What's the reasoning for the, uh, for the rejection of the bid?
We had a problem with the service. We had a problem with the way we put it out there, so we need to reject him and rebid it.
All right.
Which unfortunately happens sometime. Any other questions, comments? Then I'd ask you, please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Now we go to three D. Sir?
They're not done, not one.
No, yeah, they're not done yet.
Okay.
Aaron was out with the surgery, but it's, uh, we, I should've said that at the beginning. We'll catch up at the next meeting with both of them, 'cause, you know, she was out with a surgery.
Okay, and I think you did kind of mention...
Yeah, I caught it earlier.
Yeah, yeah, no, well, good.
I think y'all...
Oh, no, man, look, I appreciate it. It's, it's hard to keep track of all this. Thank you.
Resolution twenty-two dash one oh three, awarding contract to complete turf care for Pepperplex soccer fields refurbishment project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Is there any discussion on this item? It's our first Pepperplex item.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, is the soccer association kind of involved in that? Like, 'cause I know nothing about it. I don't know if you two...
I understand. That's why we have an architect, and that's why we meet with people, and David's here to...
He has the answer.
Yeah, and David has the answer, so we'll let David kind of explain what he's doing.
This first process actually started with LSU Ag turf department specialists, the top guys in the state. They came out, uh, February, started taking soil samples. We got the whole nine yards done on the, on the analysis, and then we started engaging with, uh, professionals on the, the right scope to do for the project. Uh, and basically, at the end of it, we were able to get some bids on, uh, the project, and so this is standard industry, um, refurbishment of the soccer fields.
Okay.
So they're gonna go through a process of aerate in the soil, leave some of the compaction, herbicide, fertilizer, anything that the, the soil tester was requiring, and then they'll come back and do some, a special type of seeding. It actually plants the seeds in the ground, um, in a strategic way instead of just broadcasting it, and, and then at that point, the grass will start to grow, and it'll be ready for the soccer season.
Wow, that sounds fancy.
It works. These guys, these guys work on university fields, high school fields, all that kind of stuff, so...
So they know a little something about it, then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
David, I, I, just refresh my, how many fields of the soccer field are irrigated?
Five are, all five are irrigated.
All five, okay, I was wondering.
And they work around that, too.
No, no, I mean, you need that to establish the growth. I didn't know.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And we've been testing the systems, uh, Richard, and I think most of that sprinkler system is still online. Baseball fields are another story, but soccer fields are good.
Yeah, we've, we've had a few surprises, but we're gonna work through them. Any other questions or comments?
Well, co- comments, I think that answers the question somebody asked, and I may have called you on for this, about where they're gonna turf the soccer fields.
Right.
But they're not turfing the soccer field, but they're getting new grass.
Right.
At your surface.
It's natural turf.
Pretty.
Yeah.
It's gonna be pretty.
It's not artificial turf. It's natural turf.
It's natural turf.
Yeah, so it's just a, a grass. Yeah.
Cool. If there's no other discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Okay.
All right, three E.
Resolution twenty-two dash one oh four, declaring two police cars as salvage and authorizing their donation to Vinton Police Department.
Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelan, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Any discussion on this item? Yes, sir?
I have a question. In the resolution, it's stating that the New Iberia Fire Department has found the following vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to correct that.
So were these, were these two vehicles donated to us?
They were donated to us.
Okay.
And then we utilized them for a little while. Our units came in, then we utilized them for a little while longer and have not, they haven't moved. I mean, we just, we're not utilizing them.
Okay.
We tried. I always try to do local first.
Mm-hmm.
So we offered them to the three municipalities in the parish. Uh, they thought about them. Uh, for various reasons, they decided not to take them, and we have a small connection with some of our staff and people with the Vinton Police Department, and we knew they were looking for cars, so what we did was, you know, try local. That didn't work, and Vinton really needed them, so we decided they were given to us, so we gonna give them this. 'Cause someone asked me, well, why don't you sell them? Well, they, they don't have a huge value, and they were given to us, so we just wanted to pass it on to another department that could utilize them.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. So I can clean up my parking lot. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, three F.
We did that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did that one. Great, look, we're moving along. Uh, three G.
Resolution twenty-two dash one sixteen, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute agreements for providing office space to the teen court program at Suites two oh one and two oh three, one twenty-one West Pershing Street, New Iberia, the Iberia Parish Courthouse Annex Building, including cooperative endeavor agreements between Iberia Parish Government and the City of New Iberia, and between the City of New Iberia and the Garen Paul Atkinson-Lewis Foundation.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelan, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Yes, sir?
Is that, was there an amended agenda?
Yeah, we don't have a three G.
We don't have a three G?
No, three G on the agenda.
Well, it's actually behind for it. It's actually...
They, uh, they, they may not have put copies of the amended agendas out for you guys. I'm sorry, but yes, sir, it was, and it was emailed out on Friday.
All right. Okay. Any comments or questions?
So, uh...
Yes, ma'am.
What are we doing?
No, that, yeah, you gotta know.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
I think I can explain.
Okay.
The, um, there was, there've been some discussions between the parish and the city, and city court, and the Garen Lewis Foundation about the teen court program. And the teen court program is a diversion program that takes, um, some minor offenses and refers them to this teen court group, which then has a jury of peers, which, uh, kind of hears these cases, and if people successfully complete that program, then these cases that are referred by the prosecutor go back to the prosecutor, and the charges are dismissed. So that's generally how it works. And the parish was willing to make a deal with the city for the city to borrow two office, two rooms in the courthouse annex, which is where the assessor's office is on the south side of Pershing Street. They, they were willing to make that deal with the city. They didn't want to deal directly with the foundation. City court didn't consider it part of their responsibility. So what we, I think what we worked out is that the city is gonna borrow those rooms from the parish, and then the city's gonna loan those rooms to the teen court operation, which is part of the Garen Lewis Foundation, and we're gonna keep everything on a tight schedule where we can terminate it pretty quickly if it doesn't go well, because that's what the parish is requiring of us. So we're gonna borrow some rooms and loan them to the teen court, and I don't think any money's changing hands for any of that.
No, no. And, you know, the Judge Haake, our city prosecutor, Nicole Burke, believe in this program, as do I, and I'm sure all of you, because it gives kids a second chance. You know, one misstep, it would be nice to be able to give them a, a break, you know, with a system, uh, provided they do their end. So it was a good program. I'm busting at the seams. We have, we don't have an extra office over here. I got rid of a conference room to make an office out of it. I mean, we're busting, so this was a way, and those rooms, just years ago, when we had teen court before, those rooms were utilized. So it just kind of worked. So, uh, talked to Larry about it, and we went back and forth, and, you know, kind of worked all this out with the foundation as well, so that we could make, 'cause it's a positive thing for our kids, so, so that we could all make it happen. And Jeff is in the process of going back and forth on it as well?
Yeah, and I haven't done the homework yet on that, as far as getting the agreements done, but I did call Nicole Burke, and I said, Nicole, is this a good thing that we want to support? She says yes.
Yeah.
So what is it doing here? We just have to agree to go in?
Yeah, all you're doing is agreeing for Jeff to do the work and me to enter into these agreements.
Okay, gotcha.
And then, you know, that way, you know, the action happens on the second floor, but with that office, and the court's all, you know, for it a hundred percent, so all you're doing now is giving me the authority, like you do on a lot of stuff, to sign this and Jeff to execute it.
And the actual space is in a parish building.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why we're doing an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Sure. And what, and what does the fond- the foundation, uh, is doing? They're, they're running the...
They basically are running the program.
Okay.
The judge allows them to use the courtroom. Nicole participates because she wants to and likes this program, but they basically, that foundation, that's their, that's what they decided was their cause.
Okay.
They would set this up, they would help kids, give them a second chance, and run this program. So without, you know, 'cause you might wonder if a wide government doing this, 'cause it's not really a government thing, so without the foundation, we wouldn't have teen court.
Okay.
So, you know, you gotta just make partners where you can if you want to get something done.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's a great thing they're doing.
No, it is, it is. Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Jimmy.
Man of the hour.
Good evening.
Well, we've been seeing you every meeting.
We are. Bella?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Item four A.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh six, on the state of buildings located at three one seven West Pershing Street, District Five, per resolution twenty-two seventy-seven, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Uh, I'll need a motion to open our public hearing. So move.
Second.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelan, Councilman Dustin Swear, is there anyone here to speak on this property? Hearing seeing no one, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelan and Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, thank you.
Okay. December the sixth, they bought a permit to demolish the house themselves, and as you go through the pictures, you're gonna notice they've taken down some siding, they've taken the roof off, they're starting to take the rafters off. So I'd recommend a revisit on June the twenty-first.
I make a motion to revisit in thirty days.
Will be...
Second.
Twenty-first will be thirty days?
Whatever he says.
Well, yeah.
Thirty days be the...
That's true, 'cause we got those other ones, too, from last meeting. They'll be up on that.
Yes, we do. Yes.
Yeah, so that'll be a packed one. Okay.
Yeah, no, it will.
We have a bunch on the twenty-first.
Yes, we do. So we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelan. Do I have a second?
Checking it.
Okay. We have a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Uh, is there any further discussion on this item? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, four B.
Ricky, I don't think you got your vote.
He just wanted to see how everybody else voted.
I made the motion and didn't vote, huh?
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh seven, on the state of buildings located at six oh eight Providence Street, District Five, per resolution twenty-two dash seventy-eight, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there anyone here representing this property? Go on up, sir. Okay. Uh, please state your name for the record, and, uh, tell us about your property.
Benny Miller. Excuse me, Benny Miller?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I'm just starting to get some funds in. I just got some funds in to start demoing, uh, myself. Uh, got a permit already. Um, it might take, um, we're trying to salvage the, uh, the wood. So, um, I don't know, maybe a couple of months. Uh, a little bit of time, though, but we, we getting at it. So, um, probably next week, we're gonna be starting on it, turn it, you know, start... probably next week, we're gonna be starting on it, turn it, you know, start turning it down, demoing it out. Trying to preserve the styper as much as we can, so we can get it recycled. Okay? See how it goes.
All right. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, so based on DeeDee's notes, uh, you're here tonight, you got your permit. So you're thinking it's gonna take you two months, give or take?
Or less.
Or less?
I mean, you know, I'm just giving it...
We're in public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we're in public hearing now. Yeah, yeah, we are in public hearing.
Okay.
You can ask questions, but I'll have to close it before...
All right, we'll just go, we'll go ahead and close it then.
Okay. Then I'm gonna go ahead and, yeah, just stay right here. Uh, we'll close this, and then we'll, so I need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm making a motion to close it.
Uh, Councilman Dustin Swear and Councilman Marlon Lewis. So now our public hearing is closed. Yeah, so please vote your machines, and we'll close it out. No, I don't vote for public hearing, Jimmy.
To close it?
No, not for public hearing. Uh, that's all good. All right, now we can have a discussion.
Okay, basically, he did, he's saying...
He did purchase a permit.
Good.
So my recommendation is it's gonna be revisit on June the twenty-first.
So you want to revisit in thirty days?
Yes, well, yeah.
So that's what I had it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
So we can make sure there's progress going.
Just to clarify, he, he doesn't have to necessarily come back on the twenty-first. We just reviewing, or you recommend him coming back?
I recommend him coming back, because if there's no progress, we want to make sure we see in progress.
I'm coming back, man.
All right, buddy.
June twenty-first.
June the twenty-first.
All right.
Okay.
Had to revisit.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So, need a motion?
I'll move to allow, you know, till the June twenty-first, and we revisit.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Marlon Lewis, a second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Is there any other discussion? If none, then vote your machines. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
All right. Have a good evening.
You too.
Don't scratch my Cadillac.
Uh-oh.
Uh, item four C.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one oh eight, on the state of buildings located at seven one three Providence Street, in District Five, per resolution twenty-two dash seventy-nine, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Is there anyone to speak on this property? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
So move.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal?
Second.
Somebody give me a second. Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Thank you. Jimmy?
Uh, I don't have anything on this one. Service was served, no permits.
Okay. Somebody want to offer up a...
I make a motion that we move to demo.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a move to demo by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. All right. Moving on to four D.
Public hearing in action, resolution dash twenty-two dash one oh nine, on the state of buildings located at fifteen sixteen Rogers Street, District Three, per resolution twenty-two dash eighty, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second. By Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Is there anyone here to represent this property? Not seeing anybody. I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Morcott and Councilman Dustin Swear. Thank you. Uh, Jimmy?
Yeah, I haven't heard or anything from anybody. Uh, I got the letter back unclaimed, and there was an article run on April twenty-seventh and April twenty-ninth in the paper.
All right. Any...
I make a motion, move to demo.
I'll second it.
Okay. Quick tonight. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. And Dustin had his hand up, you were just making a motion?
I'm not disagreeing at all.
Okay, well, I didn't know.
All I'm saying, all I'm asking was, has Mr. Broussard been in?
I already, I already talked to him, that's why.
He talked to you? Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And I could tell your face, and I said, well, I'm gonna do it.
I thought you called everybody.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear. All right, Ricky, you spoke to him. All right, good.
Yeah, we all talked to him.
I'll support it. Thank you.
So everybody's good with that? Good.
And it's, it's, I, so I've seen this.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I agree with you a hundred percent, I just, you know.
Yeah, all good. Uh, if there's no further discussion, please vote your machines. Right.
Hey, the only difference is Mr. Broussard was here, but it took a little longer.
We're gonna talk about the railroad. All right, let's get back to work. Four E.
You know he's been watching this tomorrow.
You know we love him.
Yeah.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one ten, on the state of buildings located at eight oh one School Street, in District Five, per resolution twenty-two dash eighty-one, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Anyone here to represent this prop? Good evening, sir. Uh, state your name, and let us know what you're gonna do with the property. Yes, sir.
Uh, I was, uh, prepared to address this property to, uh, tonight, but, uh, Jim got a call from one of my, uh...
Nieces?
My wife's sister.
Sisters.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, it was, uh, it was discussed, and they said it was gonna move it to the...
Revisit.
Revisit to the June twenty-first.
Okay.
You know, uh, it's, I have to respect that. But, uh, I was more than ready to address the issue tonight on one of the properties that you have listed for my family.
Mm-hmm.
Because it went to my wife, okay? And I want to certify with some of the stuff. Okay, so, uh, I'm just gonna wait and let my family do, uh, what they need to do first.
Okay. So...
We're gonna revisit this one, because the, the fam, the daughter called me today, and she's out of state, she's coming in the first week of June.
That's my wife's, that's my wife's sister.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And they'll be in, they live out of state, but they're coming into town for a couple of weeks. They want to tear it down. So I'm, I'm just gonna say revisit until they come in, and we can talk to them.
Okay.
DeeDee's recommending they go get a permit, but I'm sure you told them that.
Yeah, yeah, that, well, they'll need a permit to do it, and when they come in, they're gonna come see us.
Okay.
We've talked to them on the phone today.
Okay.
So, uh, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna let them discuss and then get back with you, because, uh, you just said they want to tear it down. I know what my wife want to do.
Okay.
Okay, it's something different from tearing it down.
Yeah, you better wait and see.
Oh, yeah.
The, the house that we talking about, it's not the house that's listed on here, okay? The house that you talking about is I totally rebuilt that house myself, okay? So, uh, it, it, the paperwork is all incorrect, the letters went out all incorrect.
So what's the problem?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure.
So, but...
I got what the Sasa has, is eight oh one school.
I'm not gonna discuss anything else, because I promised him that I would not discuss anything tonight.
Okay.
Okay, but the house that you looking at in that picture...
As far as I know, yes.
I totally gutted it out, rebuilt that house myself, okay? I was on, I, right after I retired from the military, I went driving truck across country. And it was having problems with whoever was working on this little houses downtown, I quit my job. And I came back, and I totally rebuilt that house myself, even somebody burnt it down. Okay, then I came to work for you guys, for the city, for five years.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have issues with that house.
I understand.
But I'm gonna let my family take care of, just the way they want to take care of it first, and I'll come back to you guys, not only about this house, about this process, okay?
Okay. Good, thank you, sir. So...
I'm totally lost.
Okay.
I think he's, I think he's, I think he's saying he, he, he has some vested interest in the home, and, and that's something that he wants to work out with the family.
Yeah.
And he'll work it out by the time they get to the next meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Basically, the family's gonna come back and do what you're supposed to do tonight.
I make a motion revisit on June twenty-first.
I second that motion.
Okay. I got a motion by our Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any further discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. Four F.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one one one, on the state of buildings located at eleven oh three Spencer Loop, District Two, per resolution twenty-two dash eighty-two, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Is there anyone here to speak on this property? Nope. Okay, then I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion, uh, by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Jimmy?
Uh, we sent our letter out, it came back unclaimed. This is adjudicated property.
Okay.
Yep, I make a motion to re-demo.
Morel's district, huh?
Yeah, I know.
Morel's district.
Okay, well, I, I, I reclaim, I reclaim my, my motion.
I'll let you make that motion, and I'll second it.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
I meant what you said last time it was up, that's why.
Yes, I forgot about it, though.
I just like to always... Yeah, no, no.
We good. Ricky on demo fire tonight.
I'm telling you, man. So, we good with that?
Motion.
All right, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis.
Yep.
Uh, the demoed is property. Uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Before Ricky's head pops off. All right. Before your head pops off, we gotta keep moving.
The last meeting, he came up, he said, if it comes up again, it's gone.
Yeah. All right, four G.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one twelve, on the state of buildings located at twelve fourteen St. Jude Avenue, District Two, per resolution twenty-two dash eighty-three, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter, thank you all. Is there anybody here to represent this property? No, pickings are getting slim. Uh, then I need a motion to close our public hearing. So move.
Second.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal, Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Jimmy?
Okay, the owners have purchased the permit, so my recommendation's gonna be to revisit. You can see in the pictures, they've started taking siding off, the roof is gone, so they're working on it.
Good.
Not, I just, I see they got it in District Two, but I know last time it was here, it was in District Three. And David Broussard's district, because I remember us talking about it, and I remember him talking about it.
Double check.
I think it was District Three.
It was.
Yes, I, I remember that.
I'll check it tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, that doesn't affect the, you know, what we do, the discussion.
It's being resolved.
Yeah, it's being resolved. Question coming?
They tearing it down, or they fixing it?
No, they tearing it down.
Tearing it down.
Yeah, the roof was already gone last time.
Yeah, but the rafters, they started taking some of the rafters off.
All right, that's cool.
Okay. So, everybody good with that? Then I need a, I need a motion.
Motion to revisit.
Okay, the motion to revisit by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Any further discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. All right, four H.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one thirteen, on the state of buildings located at five ten West St. Peter Street, District Five, per resolution twenty-two dash eighty-four, as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Is there anybody here to address this property? Come on up. Good evening, state your name, and tell us what you're gonna do.
It's not his property.
This isn't the owner.
Oh, okay.
This is public comment.
Oh, it's public comment.
He's a neighbor.
I'm sorry.
Public comment.
I, I come to comment that you can't walk on either side of the sidewalk. The fences are broken in, it's all trees, and if you go in there, you got a forest. And I went to feed my cat outside, and a big coon about this high come tap me on the leg. And they got snakes, everything, and they got people sleeping in that house. I run them out a couple of times.
Okay.
And then I got a, a house right next door...
Yes, sir.
That's been abandoned for a year, the grasses decide, the city came cut it. One time, they broke their lawnmower, and it, the grasses, that's what...
We have more than one lawnmower, I have to see about that. I'll, I'll look into that one. That's, yes, sir.
And that's what we want to see, what this lady's gonna do with the fence, that, that, I mean, and... About two years ago, we had a fire, uh, from the trees falling.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you remember that.
I do, I do. I went out there. Yes, sir.
I was, and I was...
Okay.
There an old lady, the, uh, when a neighbor came by, I was praying, we had to give her a pop, because of the... The sparks were flying.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody got, that's three years, man, somebody got to do something with that.
I understand.
If you, I'll even cut the damn tree.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for, thank you for coming. Yeah, we might call you. Thank you for coming.
Don't let him lie, he'll make me cut the tree.
You'll have to cut him, huh?
No, the problem we have with this, it's way more than three years.
Yeah.
What is the process tonight, if y'all vote to demolish this? How long before they see results?
Well, the woman got a lot of power, that's what.
I don't know about that.
She, obviously, got to be too much for her. She literally bought a new house and moved away and just let it go.
Right.
That made the next-door neighbor do the exact same thing. So now it's not just one property, it's two. The neighbor across the street is doing the same thing. Their house is the only one kept up in that little area. I literally cut every branch that I possibly could. If you look at a satellite, their property is cleared. I can't control the rest of it.
I understand.
And they got a tree with a bunch of broken branches that are about ready to fall them up, or...
Yeah, he can't park in his driveway, because he's worried, one storm, there goes his truck. We've already had to fix electricity, because the tree knocked down the power lines and ripped the box off their house.
Right.
Um, like you said, animals, fleas, flying ants, snakes, rats, it's just a constant bother. We can't let the kids go play in the yard, because they might get bit by something.
But it's the four-foot coon that got me. Tapping me on the legs, and when I saw that thing.
I guess so.
Only one thing to eat with the hands.
They do.
They do. Thank y'all very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, we have someone else to address this property?
I live a block away. East of morning, I got broken into, there's a lot of people that go in, there's a big hole in the fence on the Corrine Street side. There's a lot of times I'm standing out on, on my driveway, because I, you know where I live?
Yes, sir.
And I'll see the people, they come walking, and then they'll zip in and disappear in there. And I'll see the people, they come walking, and then they'll zip in and disappear in there. So there's a lot of, I won't say transients, but there's another term for them.
I understand.
Pretty much, yeah, but they like to shop underneath my carport, because I've got a few of them on camera already.
Yeah.
And like I said, east of morning, I had someone break in my truck once again and stole all kind of stuff and everything. That, that, that's just a habitat for inhumanity, right?
Right. Okay.
So, y'all can get rid of that, you got my boat again.
That's a good one too, sir, a habitat for inhumanity.
Well, don't shoot the coon.
I understand. That's it. That's it.
Call back that lady with the animal shelter to go replace that coon somewhere out in the country. He's alright, but it's the people that go in there.
I understand.
The problem is, there is a house in there. It's just, there's so much growth, you can't even see the house from the distance.
I understand. I understand.
There is a house and a storage ship.
Okay.
And a pecan tree that's down.
Okay.
There's the house.
Okay. Okay, well, this is our public hearing. Thank y'all for coming. Uh, anybody else to comment on this?
I do, because remember I asked a question about the.
Yeah, well, we can close the public hearing and then.
I move to close public hearing.
If you don't mind, we'll close the public hearing, then we'll get on. So I keep my housekeeping straight.
Okay.
Okay. So I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Dustin Swir, so now our public hearing is closed, and now I'm calling you.
Okay, well, I want to make a motion to demolish it, but with some discussion afterwards.
I second that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, my s-
No.
Alright.
No, I'm, I, I want to talk about the clutter that's around there, the jungle part, remember? That was my, my issue last time, about the tree that has fallen, plus the excess of trees and jungle that's around it, too. Are we gonna take care of that as well as the?
Okay.
As well as the, the, the house and shit.
Yeah, and Jeff has his hand up, so let me see what Jeff got.
Notice on this one?
Yeah, the letter came back unclaimed, and that's, that scares me, because I know she's living where she, where the letter went.
And the, um, the regular mail, I said the regular mail and certified, the certified came back unclaimed. Well, my recommendation is, and you're not gonna like this, we revisit in, on the twenty-first, because this one's gonna be in court.
Because I, I want to tear it down. I want to do it the right way, but I definitely, my personal opinion is, it's got to go. But my, my lawyer, who I'm gonna listen to, is telling me, okay, if you do the public service again, okay, she didn't sign the letter, right?
We're gonna do that certified and regular again for the twenty-first.
So many chances you gonna give her. You don't dare.
Hey, hang on, hang on, I know, but hey, y'all, y'all, it's not public comment anymore, sorry.
I don't vote. I don't have a button. I never had a button.
And you're not gonna get a button, I understand.
I'm not gonna get a button.
I understand. I understand. Okay, but from a legal point of view, because I, I want.
I just want to be real careful with this.
I think the council wants the house down, I realize the neighborhood wants the house down, and we have this house, and she has another house. Now she lives in the other house. I, I know it's a mess, I pretty well resign myself to the fact I'm gonna get sued. Uh, it's okay, that's why I got you. Uh, I, I want to do it the right way, though, so I have no problem being sued, because I got a good lawyer. And, and it's okay, it comes with the job. But I'm just gonna tell y'all, because I don't have a button either, okay? If my lawyer says do it the right way, and this is the right way to do it, I want to do it the right way, because I don't, I don't mean this any kind of ugly way. I don't want her to win. I don't want that, that house has wrecked the neighborhood for years and years and years and been there, and then I go to court and I lose, and then I gotta pay money, and I still got this ugly house that you gotta live by. So, I, I'm gonna respect my attorney, but I don't vote. So, in this case, because I'm the guy that's gonna have to go to court, you know, I, I want to do it the right way. So I'm not making any recommendation, any decision, because that's what my council does, but I don't mind telling you my opinion, because you know me a whole, since kindergarten, I always gave you my opinion. So my opinion is, it got to go, but I want to do it the right way. But that's just me, I don't have a button. Yes, sir.
And we've done pretty well in court.
Yes, sir.
We've had three things come up.
Uh-huh.
So far, we've, we're fine, but we're fine because we're careful.
I, I, look, I agree, and I want to be careful.
And we got a history with this one.
Yes, we do.
And, and, uh, for some people, for some times when people weren't careful.
You're exactly right.
And I have, I have offered this to the mayor on a number of occasions, and I'm offering it to him again, and that is blame me.
No, I'm not blaming you.
Get it on my skinny shoulders, that's fine. I want the thing down.
Yeah, we in this together, I just want to make sure we do it the right way, and I'm very public about that, that's why this meeting's on TV. I, I want it, that's why people come and tell me their opinion. I, I want it to be done the right way. So now I'm gonna open it up to public comment, because, I mean, to, uh, council comment. Yes, sir, you had your hand up.
A letter was sent certified, on, certified or uncertified?
Certified.
Certified.
And, and regular mail.
And regular, and it was unclaimed?
The certified was unclaimed, yes.
So how is that, how does that fall back on us if they're not claiming the letter? So what's gonna happen is, we go and say we vote to demo the house, she can sue us, but she's not claiming the letter, and she's getting the notifications, she's getting the notices. So that's why I'm kind of torn between. So we're gonna send her another notice in thirty days from, so if we take, if we go ahead, if we were to revisit this?
This is my thing. If I revisit it and go on June the twenty-first.
Okay.
And I have another letter that comes back unclaimed, now I got two, not one, two.
I see what you're saying.
I've given her every opportunity to come to this council and state her intentions.
And two is better than one.
To fix the house or whatever. I'm, I'm, I know we lost the lawsuit with her once before, but this one I want to win. This one I want to win.
Lost a lawsuit already before with this individual.
Not with this property.
But not with this property.
And not with these people.
Another, another area.
Okay.
Yeah, different story, but mistakes were made that we not gonna make.
We not gonna make them.
We ain't gonna make them, and that's why we're doing this the right way.
And when, when we were in court with Dr. Adele recently, it was really nice to have five sets of pictures. We don't need five sets, but two sets would be nice.
I mean, Dr. Adele just sued me on another deal, okay? It's gonna continue, I was, I realize it comes, like I said, it comes with the job, but as we clean our town up, and as we aggressively spend money to clean our town up, we're gonna have issues. But if I listen to that guy, okay, I'm fully confident that, you know, we're gonna come out and we can prevail. And at least I can say, we, if we didn't for some reason, we took every step, we were cautious the whole way along. So that, that, but, you know, I know it's gonna happen.
Just one more. I agree, I agree. How long does it take for us to send a letter, and how long? So like, is there enough ti- is there, do we have enough time in thirty days?
This, this letter I sent, they tried to serve it on April the twenty-fifth, April the thirtieth, and May the tenth. Today's the seventeenth, so if, if I can get it, get the resolution back this week, I can reserve her. By the end of the week, I should have it back by the next meeting.
And in June twenty-first, we should be able to make a hard decision on it.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Do we have any other discuss- oh, I got all kinds of discussion. Uh, let you go.
Okay, so.
Yes, sir.
So Jeff, I, I totally agree, and I see you angry taking, but what makes it different, this situation versus another house we demoed and didn't send two notices? Just asking.
We've, just the history with this person.
Okay, that, that's just the history.
Yeah. And I'm not saying what we haven't done is, is not enough.
You just want to be over cautious.
I just want to be over cautious.
That's just, I knew, because some, some, we didn't send it a second notice, but this one we're gonna start.
Yeah, but this, this, we've, we've, yeah.
Okay, and the second, the second thing is, I think a lot of the discussion was about the overgrown trees and stuff on the property. If we demo, we just go and get the house. We can't clean the house.
Well, I'm gonna tell you. Rick, Ricky, I'm gonna tell you this.
Yeah.
When that excavator's gonna go in.
Correct, knock it all down. Correct, knock it all down.
Most of the lot is bamboo.
Yeah.
Let me tell you, I've been on it, I've been around the house, it's tough to get around there.
Yeah.
When you're gonna go in with an excavator, a lot of that's gonna be.
We don't do trees, we're not in the tree business.
I have to move the trees down.
Hang on, there's no way you can tear that house down on this particular instance. You're gonna bring a big excavator in there, whoever the little bidder is, you know, I'll go and watch them tear stuff down sometime. It's all coming down. They, they have to tear it all down just to knock the house down and haul that crap out. Oop, haul that stuff out. So it's, it's gonna have to come down, and in this case, yeah, I know you can't get anywhere. So I think in this case, the, the brush and the growth and the bamboo and those small trees and stuff is gonna get cleared, because you gotta get to the house.
Is that bad?
Oh, is that bad? I've been there. I've been there.
Alright, I'm good with.
More than once.
So, um, I rescind my motion.
You rescind your motion. Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. We didn't have a second on it yet.
I did have a second.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
I rescind it. I rescind the second.
Alright.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to revisit on June the twenty-first.
Okay.
And I'll sec- and I'll second it.
Did you have any comments?
Well, I'll second the motion, and then we have comments after that, right, after the recension, huh?
We can.
My only comment was.
Let him make his comment.
I know everybody agreed, but I disagree, but I trust the process.
Okay.
Well, I like that.
I think we should tear it down tonight.
Yeah.
So I disagree with everything, but I trust the process.
Okay. Good, good.
And personally, I do too, but, um.
I understand.
You know, I'll go along with the flow.
Yeah, I'm second, I'm gonna go with the second to revisit.
Uh, Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter has a motion on the floor. We have a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis, but, but you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, slow that down. Yes, ma'am.
Well, no, it's just, can we make this top priority once we all vote in, uh, June? Like, can we, that's dangerous. I mean, he's getting broken into, and then others can't even park where they're supposed to, and I know we've kind of boosted some up before because of a lot of criminal activity.
Yeah.
And so that's what sounds like's happening with this property.
Call the, I already know David's case, because I, I, I'm already involved in it and know about it, saw it on Facebook, already called my chief about it. Uh, I will ask for extra patrols around that neighborhood while we deal with this, so that hopefully that doesn't continue. And, I mean, when we say move it up, it can be first on the list at that meeting, but, you know, the process has got to get to that meeting.
Right.
Right.
The process time of how legally, how much time you give to give notice and all that, I can't speed that up anymore if that's the route we go. But, I mean, I'm not being smart, you know, but Eli, but I'll just put it first on the list at that meeting, but I don't have a way to move it up anymore if we trust the process, we follow the process.
The meeting process can stay like it is, because that doesn't affect anything. It's the asbestos test and the gas line, all of those things that have to be removed, calling Dottie.
Yeah, after we say demo. Yeah, that's the, that's the due diligence we gotta do behind the scenes.
That we can get it.
Because if we blow the neighborhood up, they not, they not gonna be happy with us.
That might mean it's ruined.
It might kill the coon.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to kill the coon. No, we gotta stop this. Y'all gonna give me a story. Any more discussion?
Only, only comment I didn't get a chance to say, because it was public comment, I like his comment about habitat for inhumanity.
I did too. We're gonna have to remember that one.
That's a good one.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor and a second, and where our discussion is done, uh, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening. Uh. Four I.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one-fourteen on the state of buildings located at seven-oh-five and seven-oh-five-and-a-half Walton Street, District Five, per resolution twenty-two dash eighty-five as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do you have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcot and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Uh, do we have anybody? Man, I left Bart of Kevin's ring on something, or Tommy, we don't have anybody here. Uh, is anybody here to represent this property? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I need a motion to close. Thank you.
Can we see, I was, I was trying to see it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to get the second motion?
Yeah, no. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, and I need a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, thank you. Okay, now we, all good.
Okay, there's two houses on this property. Marlon, you know where Fox Valley is?
Yeah.
The back house, that's where it butts, is at Fox Valley. I think it's Fox Valley. I do have service from the newspaper, and I did send a letter and a regular mailing, and the certified letter came back. Somebody claimed it.
They did claim it?
Yep, they signed for it.
So what does that mean?
They know about the meat.
They know about the meat, okay.
But they're not here.
I think our councilwoman wants to demo it, but that's what I'm reading from her comments. If no one appears.
And I can tell you on this one.
We demolish both houses.
Yes, sir.
This one's got lots of owners, because this Sally Placide woman, um, this is the one where you gotta go back a hundred years to find where they bought it. So, you know, Marlon talks about Grandma's house, this is like great, great, great Grandma's house.
Yeah. The history lasts.
It's a crowd of people, and when so many people own it, that means nobody owns it. Nobody's gonna take responsibility for it, so. I'd be surprised if anybody stepped forward on that.
Motion to demolish.
Motion to demolish by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any further discussion?
And that's both, right?
Yes. Yeah, and she, and she said if no one showed up, demolish them both. So if there's no further discussion, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Alright, our last one for the evening. Madam Clerk, four J.
Public hearing.
Last house.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-two dash one-fifteen on the state of buildings located at six-ten West Washington Street, District Five, per resolution twenty-two dash eighty-six as noticed and advertised on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, anyone here to represent this property? Hearing and seeing none, motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, thank y'all. Uh, this is another District Five house.
Doing all day work tonight.
Anybody?
I move to demolish.
I'll second.
I have a motion to demolish by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter and a second by Councilman Dustin Swir. Any discussions? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Okay, Madam Clerk, five A.
Ordinance twenty-two-two dash eleven, CWC Investments LLC, Bart Broussard, a recommendation to approve the rezoning of properties identified on a plot survey entitled "Plot Showing Partition of Property Owned by CWC Investments LLC by Paul Prince LLC", dated three eighteen twenty-two, showing tract one measuring four thousand five hundred and two square feet, or zero-point-one-oh-three AC being one-twenty-five Center Street, tract two A measuring two-three-five-eight-point-six SF, or zero-point-zero-five-four AC, in tract two B measuring two thousand one hundred fifty-three-point-four SF, or zero-point-zero-four-nine AC from C-one to C-two zone and classification.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swir and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? And we have the property owner here. Good evening.
Bart, Bart, I'm sorry. Um, this is a little bitty piece of property on Center Street. Uh, King Travel used to be next door, it's a finance company now. Then there's this little small patch of grass. There's a parking lot for a yellow house, or, um, Mr. Homewood Woods is in a yellow house, it's his law office with his wife. Behind it's Edward Landry's posting porches, I think it's a six-unit apartment complex, so that's kind of the general picture of what's there. Across the street is the shadows of Welcome to the Center. This came about because my, uh, yard man decided to go to college, so I'm having to cut the grass, and I have to bring a lawnmower there to cut it, so I started thinking I had to do something else with this property. I sat with Jane and visited about trying to look at the zoning and what I could do. I don't know if highest investment use of this property is gonna be a little two-person office or a little two-bedroom house, but I wanted something, put something there in the aesthetics of what the neighborhood looks like now. Not sure if the construction cost is gonna work, so my other choice would be to sell it if I don't, but I'd like to run some numbers and try and figure out if I could put a little single-family or a, uh, office there. Um, the reason I did the two lots, one would be incorporated into the parking lot that's there now for the little yellow house, which handles the Harman's office. Not utilizing the whole parking lot, but if, if highest investment use of this is a little single-family small house, then I want to do that, maybe I'll do two, but maybe I'll convert the yellow house on the corner of Center and Charles back into a single-family residence. A lot of this comes to be when, I, I'm a real estate broker, commercial broker. I have three buildings under contract right now downtown. There's a drive to be downtown. One's gonna be a residence, one's gonna be a bed and breakfast, and the other one's gonna be a restaurant. Can't give any more detail than that, because it's all pending deals. So there's some activity, I'm getting calls for other activities, so I just started looking at this little piece, it's sitting there, and I want to do something a little differently. That's where it's coming from.
Cool.
Or sell it to somebody who does something that doesn't hurt the value, because I still own the house next door.
Yeah. Comments, questions? Alright, then, uh, I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Gotta do something a little positive with all that tearing down stuff.
Thank you.
Got a lot of positive things from this council.
Alright, uh, six A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twelve, amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia, amendment number three, and to set for public hearing on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
I need a motion.
Move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Councilman's remarks, Dustin, I'll start on your end.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, Councilman Swir.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for clearing that up.
Cleaned myself up.
I just want to say, uh, let's keep our prayers together for the family of Mr. Marty Tronha. Uh, he was a, a friend, but also a colleague on the parish side. He will be missed. He actually was a great public servant, I think since two thousand and twelve, and he's been lifelong resident of this parish, He will be missed, he actually was a great public servant, I think since two thousand and twelve, and he's been lifelong resident of this parish, and, uh, just, just need to keep him in our prayers and pray for his family through this tough time, so, thank you, that's it for tonight.
Thank you.
I just want to remind, um, the members of District Four that we have Neighborhood Watch on Thursday, May the nineteenth, and it'll be at the Slime Inn at six o'clock PM, come on out, uh, you don't necessarily have to be a member of District Four, come on out, um, it's something for everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir. Yeah, just saying, echo Dustin's, I had a chance to serve Marty for eight years, and, uh, my condolences to his family, and, uh, keep him in his prayers, but also, on a positive note, uh, was able to participate in the By Your Side Run, which they came and, uh, spoke to us about huge success, a lot of people, a lot of people, uh, really aware of mental health and mental illness, and, um, it was a really good turn off our community.
Thank you.
I also want to give my condolences to the family of Marty Tronhorn, uh, thank y'all for allowing, uh, him to serve our community for so many years, I met Marty a couple of times, didn't know him personally, but he was always, uh, nice to me, and, uh, you know. So, with that being said, again, on a good note, uh, our SOS Summit this weekend was amazing, we served over a hundred kids, and when I say serve, we're not talking about food, we served them spiritual food, we served them, um, we gave them plans, we had free counseling sessions, we had, uh, our law enforcement was out there to encourage them and to guide them, and it was just, it was awesome, it was this past Saturday, uh, and Mayor, we want to thank you for allowing, you know, us to use the building, as you always do, uh, being a great partner to the kids in our community, uh, but, but it was amazing, man, uh, vendors came out, Louisiana workforce, uh, it was amazing, it was meaningful, one of the best events we had post-COVID, uh, and I just want to thank everybody who participated in this, and everybody who donated anything, uh, you know, to help save our streets.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I also want to send my condolences to, uh, Parish Councilman Marty Tronhorn's family and his colleagues, you know, I know everyone kind of gets close, you might have a little bickering here and there, but everyone, you know, at the end of the day, you're all one big family, and so condolences to both of those groups, um, and I think that's all I have for today.
Thank you, as everyone else, condolences to the Tronhorn family, uh, Marty was a public servant for a long time, uh, worked with him on quite a few issues, um, so let's just keep his family, you know, in our prayers. Uh, with John Car Show this weekend, went really well, Saturday, we had so many things going on, it was crazy, but Car Show was good, I'm very glad to hear the summit went very well, uh, I'm up for any kind of partnership that we can do to, you know, give that uplift and that education and that, uh, inspiration to our kids, because, uh, as you say, we gotta save our streets. Good meeting tonight, a lot of good discussion, other than that, our next meeting is June the seventh, and, uh, that's it, I'll get a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank y'all very much.